Chairman's bells have chimed. I think that means it must be at nine o'clock.
Kind of sounds like in the middle of the night, the bells of death or something.
Foghorns myself.
Oh, I love foghorns. I grew up with them. Okay, it's nine o'clock. It looks like everybody's on, so I want to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, August 12th, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Janet, would you be so kind as to lead us in our pledge of allegiance?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Republic which stands one nation
Janet, will you do roll call for us?
Commissioner Gupta.
Here.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Hanson.
Here.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Here.
Here.
And staff is represented by Monowitz, Fox, and Montes.
At the beginning of every meeting, we have an opportunity for our communication to the Planning Commission for items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anybody who has indicated any wish to speak today, Janet?
Chairman Hanson, no, no hands are raised at the moment, and I have not received any written correspondence for this item. But however, I did want to just go over the raising of the hand features for public comment. So for those attending the meeting on the Zoom video conference, we will be using the raise your hand feature in order to organize any public comments. During the general public comment period and for each item on the regular agenda, I will ask those members of the public who wish to comment to click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak. Please note that members of the public must wait for my prompting connection with each agenda item before using the raise hand function. For example, you cannot raise your hand at the beginning of the meeting for an item that is later in the meeting. When you hear your name called, I will prompt you to unmute your account and inform you that you may begin speaking. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll give a moment for anybody out there who wishes to take the opportunity to raise their hand or do the star feature as Janet has indicated. I don't see any on my screen, so we'll proceed to minutes. We have two sets of minutes in front of us. Is there any updates or motions to accept?
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in front of us. Janet, will you do the roll call?
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye, yes.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Chairman Hanson.
Aye.
Thank you.
We'll proceed then on to our first item on the agenda. Will you please read in the item?
Item one, owner Tomcat Ranch LLC, applicant Carrie Burke, file number PLN 201900379, location 2997 Pescadero Road in Pescadero, and the project planner is Kelsey Lang.
So I'll turn it over to the project planner.
Great. Good morning, commissioners and chairman. I'll be presenting PLN 2019-00379 for Pescadero Road. This is an after the fact coastal development permit and planned agricultural permits to legalize a greenhouse and barn to office conversion. So as I mentioned, this is an after the fact permit. The 780 square foot non-sol dependent greenhouse was built in 2010, and a legally existing barn was partially converted into six offices, two bathrooms, a lunchroom, lounge, and storage area for ranch headquarters in 2012. Both of these structures are within the 12 acre developed area of the ranch, which totals 1,118 acres overall. There's no grating, tree removal, or vegetation removal required or proposed. Here we have an aerial view of the main property that we're talking about today outlined in green. The other properties shown are the other properties that are part of the ranch and used for grazing. And then here we've zoomed into the developed area of the ranch, and right up at the top is where the greenhouse is, and then over about midway down on the left is where the barn that has been converted to offices is. And here we're looking at the greenhouse, and as you can see, it's being used for growing plants currently. And then this is the barn that has been converted to offices. So the pictures along the top show the bottom level where they took stalls and converted them into individual offices, as you can see on the right-hand side. And then the two of the pictures on the bottom are the upper level, which are used for storage, and a lounge area. And then the workshop is still on the bottom level as well. So this property is in the agricultural land use designation, as well as the planned agricultural district zone, and it's been reviewed for conformity in the general plan with the vegetative, water, fish, and wildlife resources, soil resources, rural land use, visual resources, water supply, and wastewater supply, and found to conform with all of those policies. The proposal was reviewed by the Agricultural Advisory Committee on May 11, and they found that there would be no negative impact to agriculture by legalizing these structures. And the structures also conformed to the criteria of the PAD permit issuance, as well as the zoning district setbacks in height. Being in the coastal zone, this project was reviewed against the development, visual, and agricultural components of the local coastal program and found to conform. These legalization will not have a significant impact on coastal resources or agricultural productivity as it's within the developed area of the parcel already, and it's not viewable from a public road. The two structures are categorically exempt from CEQA, the greenhouse because it is a small structure that's accessory to existing agricultural uses, and the barn to office conversion because it's converting less than 2,500 square feet of an existing structure with minor exterior changes. Given that, we are recommending that the Planning Commission approve the coastal development permit and planned agricultural district permit subject to the conditions and findings listed in Attachment A.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the commissioners if they have any questions, and I'll start off with Commissioner Ramirez. Do you have any questions, staff?
You need to unmute.
I thought I was unmuted. No, I'm saying not at the moment for staff, but maybe for the applicant. My question is with regards to the use of the office. It seems like it's a lot of space for office. Is it exclusive to the operation of the farm?
So the applicant may be able to speak to it in more detail, but the offices are used as ranch headquarters for the grazing operation.
Okay, I'll wait for my answer then.
Okay, we'll go on to Commissioner Ketchum. Do you have any questions, the staff?
No questions, thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Santa Cruz, do you have any questions?
I just have a question about the sewage of the property. They said it's condition approval. What kind of condition is that pending for approval?
So when building permits are submitted, the application will be reviewed by Environmental Health Services again to confirm that there's sufficient sewage capacity for their septic system.
So right now, we don't know if it has enough capacity for the square footage of the construction.
So Environmental Health Services has reviewed the application and conditionally approved it. So they're saying at this stage, what they've reviewed looks good. They're happy with it, but they'll do a more detailed review at the building permit stage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Gupta, do you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. I'm not sure whether we have to wait for the applicant, but I'll ask anyway. Is there any cannabis being grown in the greenhouse or on the ranch?
No, not to my knowledge. The ranch is being used exclusively for grazing purposes.
Grazing purpose, okay. Yeah, depending on how the conversation goes with the applicant, I may bring this up again, but thank you. No more questions.
Okay, thank you. I've got two questions. Is the applicant the one who did the original conversion, unpermitted conversion? And I'll start with that one first.
My understanding, and I can speak to this further, is that the ownership has remained the same, but that the ranch management has changed hands in the time since the original conversion.
And how did this come to our attention? Did the applicant come to us or some other means?
Yes, the applicant came forward.
Excellent. Thank you. I think we'll then go on to the applicant, if they want to make any comments on the presentation brought by staff or if they have a presentation themselves as they so wish to desire to speak to the commission.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Carrie Burke. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Terrific. Zoom meetings are always a little bit dicey, but thank you so much to the commission and staff for holding a meeting today. I know it's a lot of effort to have the public hearing. Also, a big thank you to Kelsey for her work on her comprehensive staff report and presentation today. And yes, she made a site visit to the property and to answer some of your questions. First of all, this is a large ranch that has functions. They do practice holistic grazing. They also do a lot of biological monitoring on the site. So they have a ranch manager, they have a grazing manager, a person that does their operational management. Also, one of the employees is devoted to the sales and marketing of the beef, and also they provide many food programs to the local schools in Pescadero. We have the facility manager because there's a lot of old buildings. This was originally a dairy, and so there's a lot of old buildings that need repairs and everything, and we have a ranch hand. So there was just a portion, it's less than 25% of that existing barn was previously converted to very small offices so people have their individual space for the activities that they pursue for the ranch operations. The other question has to do with the septic of yes. We work very carefully with environmental health. Greg Smith and Ed Diaz have been out, so we went through making sure that, of course, in getting the permits, that all of the systems are up to standards. That was the whole purpose of coming in to obtain the permits. In the past, there was an overzealous staff member that they got a little ambitious, but we wanted ourselves to come in and have everything for the ranch under permits. And so that's the purpose of this application. And Mark Heine is here also, I believe, on the video. So if you had any additional questions, we'd be glad to answer them. The landowner agrees to all the project conditions, and we will, once this concludes, if it's a positive recommendation, then we will obtain all the necessary building permits to conclude this chapter and have all these items covered under all the sanctioned permits by the county. So if we have no other questions, that's my information for you this morning.
Thank you. I'll ask the commissioners, and I'll start off again with Commissioner Ramirez. Do you have any questions to the applicant?
Yeah, how big is the operation? How many heads of cattle do you normally have in the ranch?
Commissioner Ramirez, it varies depending on the grass year. So we can run a cow calf of 150 to 100, just depending on grass conditions, market conditions. So it varies, but they practice, they work with the biologist to make sure that the amount of grazing does not compete with some of the birds. They work very closely with the Blue Point, if I'm getting it right, but some great care and thought that goes into also on the soils management. So they don't overgraze it, but it is definitely a commercial grazing operation. The Left Coast Cattle Company, they market their beef, and so this is, but they, and some of the areas are a little hilly, so that's the amount of ground that it takes to run that amount of cattle in that manner.
Okay, a follow-up question to that. So how many people does it take to run this operation?
Well, you mean as far as more the cowboys?
Yeah.
Rather than the...
Yeah, how many?
Well, they have, you have a ranch, the grazing special, Biaggi, and then you have, he's got a ranch hand, and then maybe you have some part-time. During the busy time, you have the younger people that they can hire, the day help that they would hire.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thanks. I think that, thank you.
Could I ask a follow-on question to that?
Please.
Do the cattle or the cows come and go that they are brought in and taken away?
Yes, Commissioner Gupta, they have, that's a great question, and I forgot to answer your cannabis questions. But there's no cannabis in the greenhouse. It's just for plants other than cannabis, so it's no commercial cannabis at all. But no, they practice rotation, it's very practiced rotational grazing, so not only on the ranch, but occasion when they have opportunity to grow their herd, then they could seek and actually take them off-site. But at 1,100 acres, that's a fairly sizable ranch. And so, but they move them around because it's that flash grazing which keeps the environment. You don't then go down to the roots of the plant, and so that's one of the things that they do practice is rotational grazing.
So the cattle doesn't stay there?
No, they're on the ranch. Yes, the cattle live there. They're on the ranch. But within the ranch, you move them around to different pastures.
Okay. Thank you. Can I go ahead with my next question?
Questions?
Okay, so I noticed that this construction took place in 2011. And so I would like to know what activated this application after nine years?
Well, I was not aware of the, myself, I don't, I go to the ranch only on occasion when necessary, but that they had, it's just a cinder block building that they built, and then over time became aware of it. And I said, you know, it would be in best interest that permits were obtained for the, that is the only new structure that was since she owns the property that has been constructed. So it was just under advisement and that to obtain, and their willingness is to obtain permits.
Okay, so which one you said was the new structure?
The greenhouse.
The greenhouse.
So little greenhouse, yeah. The other was the barn, was just the conversion of a portion of the barn.
Okay. So does the neighborhood parcels have similar kind of use of their property? Like?
Well, this is a large landholding.
Okay.
The Tomcat Ranch is large. I mean, we do have some other larger ones surrounding Pescadero, and that this is a bit unusual in that being a former dairy, we have more buildings than a lot of the other farms other than the purely greenhouse. You'll find the greenhouses more down on Cloverdale Road and in Pescadero proper, but this is a size of a sizable cattle ranch. So yes, you need that much to run that amount of cattle.
Okay.
And none of the buildings are visible, none of the buildings are visible from Pescadero Creek Road.
Okay, understood. So you said it was a former dairy?
Dairy? Correct.
Sorry?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, it was a dairy many years ago.
Okay, but not used as a dairy, no?
No, that's been several decades ago. Dairies, I think it was probably 40 years ago that it ceased being a dairy and became a grazing ranch.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Ketchum, do you have any questions?
Well, I'm just curious, the guest houses, are those for staff or is there another operation where those houses are used?
The houses are used for the landowner. They have, well, there's a ranch. Manager is housing there, and then you have the landowner, and she has four children. She owned other properties where more of her employees live. So she does provide housing. It's just not on this parcel at this time.
And then just, you mentioned, I think you said Blue Point? Was this in relation to, what is Blue Point? Or did I not hear that right?
It used to be the Point Reyes Bird Observatory, but I think they changed her name, but they've done some research there in the past. So they work cooperatively with just understanding the dynamics of holistic grazing.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Commissioner Santa Cruz, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, does any commissioner have any thoughts?
No.
Hearing none? Portion of this, and do we have anybody who wishes to speak to this item?
Thank you, Chairman Hanson. For this portion of the meeting, I'm going to have my colleague Angela Montes lead us through this, and I don't have any written comments.
Thank you, Janet, and thank you, Chairman Hanson. We are now taking public comment for item one. As a reminder, if you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand through the Zoom feature. For those joining by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. And we do not have any hands raised, chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, then I'll take a motion to close the public portion, followed by a roll of the Janif.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Gupta.
Aye.
Commissioner Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Ramirez.
Aye.
Commissioner Ketchum.
Aye.
Chairman Hanson.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're in now the discussion portion of our meeting. Does anybody have any comments or wish to lead this?
Chairman Hanson, before you begin discussion, if I could just conclude some staff remarks, if that would be all right with you?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. Good morning, commissioners, and I'd like to thank Kelsey and Carrie and the property owner for bringing this forward towards resolution. After the fact, permits are never easy, and it always helps when you have a willing property owner who's ready to go through all the necessary steps. And so that can take time, and oftentimes when we prioritize what's going to be put forth on the agenda, after the fact permits sometimes are less of a priority if they're not doing damage and, you know, the applicant has what they need, so there's not as much of a push. So the staff, I will take some credit on behalf of staff. This item's been ready for some time, but it's been the only item that was ready for a couple meetings. And as you might know, we're reluctant to schedule a planning commission meeting when we just have one item because your time is valuable, and we like to try and only meet when we have more than one. But this has dragged on a little bit, and so we wanted to get this done with, and I thought it was a good opportunity for us to meet now that we have the Zoom option. It makes it a little bit easier, so we don't have to travel great distances, so I hope you don't mind. In any event, with regard to the grazing activity and the legalization of this operation, I think it's appropriate to reflect on the purpose of this zoning in this area that is designated for agricultural use and what it means to be a good steward of agricultural land. I think we've learned over time that just letting it sit fallow is not always in the best interest of the natural habitats and that active management, including the use of grazing, is a way in which we maintain some of our rare and unique species. And so I think that our recommendation today is reflective of our opinion that Tomcat Ranch does a good job of managing the land effectively. We believe that the features they are seeking to legalize are important to support that operation, and we are therefore recommending that you approve the application. So that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, have any comments?
I'll lead it off?
Please.
All right. I'm just going to say that I agree with Steve in regards to the fact that, you know, I think they've run a good operation there. I just wish that they, you know, that they wouldn't do it this way as far as like building things and then coming afterwards to get a permit, because it sets a bad precedence, you know, for other operations out there to just decide to, you know, just go ahead and build whatever you want, and then you can always go back and ask for, you know, to fix the after the fact. So I think we should try to discourage this at any cost. And, but in general, I mean, I agree. I think that what they have done is something that is needed for their operation. And, but in general, I mean, I agree. I think that there, you know, what they have done, it's something that is needed for their operation. And it sounds like, you know, they have a good management in general, good, good practices of the ranching operation that they're running. So I, I am going to support it. And I think, I think we can kind of see that anytime that Mrs. Burke is involved and trying to solve some of these things, she's a pretty good person to clean up things and bring us good projects to, to fix. So thank you, Mrs. Burks, for that.
Anybody else have comments?
I would, I would just like to add that, that I think cleaning this up or legalizing it after the fact, yes, it's, I agree that it's not a good precedence, but I'm glad they brought it forward, especially keeping the, what they, what Mrs. Burke said about is environmental health benefits. So, and I'm in support of that. So that, that's what I would like to commend her on. Thank you.
I have, I have a question or clarification, Commissioner Hanson. In the letter, it says that they're legalizing the greenhouse and the barn to the office conversion. But in the conversation with Mrs. Burke, and maybe I am, I'm here wrong, it says only the barn to the office conversion that they're doing now?
Do we have staff answer that?
Yes. So to just summarize, the barn was legally built existing. It's the conversion part of the barn that was done without permits. And the greenhouse was built without permits. So those are the two aspects that this permit would legalize.
Okay, thank you.
My own comments is, you know, having lived on the coast side, seeing things done without permits. I think it has a historical precedence that goes back over a century. What I do like a lot is the willingness to come in on their own and working with staff and getting it done. And, and what they're asking for is reasonable, the management of the coast side is reasonable. And I'm, unless I confess, otherwise I will be supporting this idea.
If I may, Chairman Hanson, I'd like to respond to some of the comments and concerns about after the fact permitting. And I would just note that there's a lot of hurdles that you need to go through and there are significant penalties in some cases. And it's not a slam dunk, if you will, because there are many instances when someone seeks after the fact approvals where the answer is no, you need to remove or demolish. So I think that we certainly have disincentives in place. And we would not be bringing forward a recommendation of approval if we did not believe that, looking back on what was done, that it truly is consistent with the relevant policies and requirements. So we don't take these things lightly either. And in this instance, I think the time that it's taken reflects the degree to which we've really had to dig into these issues and make sure that they were appropriately addressed. So that concludes my remarks.
I also will follow up with that and say probably people are coming out on their own is because I think the county has done a good job and not being abusive in retribution or anything in that. You're willing to work to get it done right. And I appreciate that on my part.
I have a comment, if I may?
Please.
Yes, I think that what they're legalizing here, if they were, if they had not done it yet and were asking for a permit, I think it, it complies with, I think it would be granted. And so I, I, I support this.
I, yeah, I have another remark. It's just like, you know, these after the fact permits, considering the fact that the state level is being very flexible in some of the amnesties and different programs at the different areas in the county, not necessarily in the farm area. It would not be, I personally think, kind of like, it would be kind of like unfair to treat certain areas of the county or state differently than other housing and other areas are being treated. Because in general, the state is being flexible when it comes to the allowing after the facts due to the housing crisis and stuff, even though it's not related in this particular case. I think, in my opinion, it would be, it's, it's a great approach that Steve personally and the county is taking that because it makes it a more consistent in a way with treating our constituents in the, in the Samatay County. I, I like that. You know, thank you very much, Steve, for allowing people to come over and become legal in, in, in a sense. You know, I think it's good. Can I propose the recommendation then?
Yes.
If I, if I may, before we go forward with that, yeah, I, I agree with that. But I don't know how we, we can get into, you know, discouraging this kind of activity as far as doing, you know, unpermitted building and then coming, you know, coming forward afterwards. I, I just, I just don't have a good feeling about that in general. I mean, it's better that people come forward right from the beginning, you know, get their permits and everything. It's done the right way right from the beginning. So in general, I think the county should continue to try to discourage this kind of activity so that we don't have too many of these things. And, you know, and yeah, I mean, in general, if it has to be done, let's get it done afterwards. But absolutely discouraging is important. Okay, should I make my recommendation? Okay, that the planning commissioner approved the coastal development permit and planned agriculture district permit, county file number PLN 2019 00379, based on and on the subject to the required funding and condition of approval listed in attachment eight.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Janet, will you call roll call?
Commissioner Gupta?
Hi.
Commissioner Santa Cruz?
I.
Commissioner Ketchum?
Hi.
Commissioner Ramirez?
I.
Chairman Hanson?
Hi. So unanimously, thank you very much. And we'll now proceed to the next item on our agenda.
Thank you, commissioners and Chairman Hanson. The next item is correspondence. And I have not received any correspondence that I need to report to you, but I would like to inform you of correspondence that the department intends to send out. The High Speed Rail Project has an draft environmental impact report out for public comment. There's been a number of environmental reviews of this project. And I can't tell you off the top of my head what's triggered the most recent one. But the department is collaborating with other departments in the county to issue a letter. I believe the deadline is coming up the second week of September. So if you're interested in knowing about the department's various concerns and interests, I'm happy to share that with you. And if you have particular concerns you'd like to make sure are addressed, I'm happy to incorporate your comments if you'd like to share them with me. So unless there's questions or comments on that, I'm prepared to move on to the next item.
Please do.
Okay, so there is no study session proposed for the next meeting. But as you'll hear more in my director's report, we are prepping for a study session in the near future on the Connect the Coast Side Plan. For next meeting, we have two items currently on the agenda. But we've got a design review and non-conforming use permit for a new home in Emerald Lake Hills. And we have a coastal development permit for the Department of Public Works and County Parks Maintenance Programs. So as you can imagine, both the Department of Public Works and the Parks Department have the need to do maintenance activities on a periodic basis, some of which are exempt from permit requirements, a few that trigger permit requirements due to their proximity to a creek or other area designated as appealable under the Coastal Act. So what we've recommended that they do and done with this with other agencies is that rather than having to obtain many permits for different maintenance activities is to do what we call a master permit and to specify the activities that will occur over a five-year basis and have a permit application that can be considered that covers all those activities. So we'll be bringing, bringing that forward and looking forward to your action on that. All right. So that concludes my report on the next meeting. And unless there's questions, I'll move on to the director's report. Okay, so just an update on the reach codes that the Board of Supervisors adopted, requiring new construction, that's new residences and new commercial development to be all electric and to include solar power. Those have been approved, tentatively approved by the state and are set to go into effect on September 10th of this year. So I will continue to keep you appraised of how that goes. There's information on the department website, right on the homepage at the top that informs your applicants of these requirements and provides more information. There's a lot of support that's available from Office of Sustainability and Peninsula Clean Energy for folks who have questions about how to comply. So our hope is that it's a system. But I'll keep you updated on that. As I mentioned earlier, the department's been busy doing public outreach for Connect the Coast Side, which has also included a broader comment about general transportation issues on the coast side. And we're concluding those efforts. I want to thank Janet for everything she's done to help us with those. I've got to say, in today's current environment, being able to conduct effective Zoom meetings is, can be challenging. And we are so lucky to have Janet's assistance and expertise in this regard. So she's been really a crucial component to our outreach efforts as has been members of the Department of the Office of Sustainability, the Budget Department, County Manager's Office. And I think we've really set the bar high in terms of how we conduct public outreach in today's day and age. So I'm very proud of all their efforts and I'm looking forward to updating the commission on the results from that. And unless there's questions on that, I'll move on to the final part of my director's report, which is a service update for the department. So we continue to operate remotely. The entire building where our office is located continues to be closed. We are working on plans, as I've mentioned, for a public services window. That's evolved. We had originally envisioned a kiosk within the lobby of our building. We're now looking at a type of bank teller or movie theater service window. That people can interact face to face, but they would be outside of the building, under a covered area. So those discussions continue to evolve. And my hope is that can be put in place in a timely fashion because the expectation is this form of operation will be continuing throughout the calendar year and likely well into next year. So we continue to adapt. My staff is doing a good job. They're doing the best they can, working very hard to try and continue to keep our services operational at the same level that they used to be. But I can't underestimate some of the challenges that they face. I really have a lot of sympathy and respect for all the efforts that they've put into it. Because we are, we've got a number of vacancies in the department. And due to the economic downturn and the need to prepare for significant reductions in revenue, the county is having to cut costs across the board. And that means a hiring freeze, a promotional freeze. There are exceptions and I am pursuing a number of them. So I hope that will help. We are also continuing to make great progress on the upgrade of our electronic permitting system. And I believe that that will really make it easier for our applicants to conduct their business online. And also for people who are just interested in following what's going on in their neighborhood, I hope it will have many features that will enable people who want to keep track of new development proposals to, you know, do a map-based search and see what's going on in their neighborhood, keep track of those projects. So I'm really excited to bring that forward. So that concludes my service update as well as my director's report. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Steve. Does any commissioners have any comments, questions? Yes?
Yes. Last time, Steve, you had mentioned that the Cypress Point project was also going to come to Board of Supervisors meeting. Is there any update on that?
Yes. Thank you for that reminder, Commissioner Gupta. The Board of Supervisors did agree with the staff recommendation to submit the amendments to the Coastal Commission for their review. So the way the process works is that the Coastal Commission will complete its review of the LCP amendment and they can either approve it as submitted, they can approve it with suggested modifications, or they could deny it. And their typical action with regard to LCP amendments is to approve it with modification. So I wouldn't be surprised if the commission suggests some changes. We'll see. Of course, we'd welcome a straight up approval, but, you know, they need to go through their process. And once they do that, then county, the Board of Supervisors will need to acknowledge the commission's action and either accept their approval and at that point, the amendments would become effective or accept the changes that they've proposed. And only if they accept the changes would it become effective. And so there are quite a number of steps that still need to be completed before those amendments become effective. And then, of course, we have the permitting process. So the, once the amendments, if and when the amendments become effective, then we will begin processing the coastal development permit application to construct the project. And that will come back to the planning commission. So still a number of steps that need to occur before that project can proceed. And I'll be happy to keep you informed of how, what's going on during my regular updates.
I have something, are we under the commissioner updates and questions section?
Yeah.
Okay, I have a couple of questions or observation and one to Steve and another one for Janet. Steve, is it possible to include on the project? Steve, is it possible to include on the project location, the district section, like this five, six or four in any of the planning? That is presented to us? Like in parentheses or something?
I don't think that there's anything that would preclude that. I guess one thing that we always keep in mind is what we have to put these ads in the newspaper and every. Every keystroke is another cost, so we try and keep the descriptions to the minimum. I don't know, counsel, do you have any opinion on the matter?
I think, as you said, it's it's simply a matter of the noticing. It's fairly easy to refer to the map and figure out which district a project is in. And, you know, there are obviously some districts geographically that include much more unincorporated territory. And planners can probably pretty readily figure out whether a project is in a particular which district it's in. But yeah, you wouldn't want to have too extensive a description because you wind up paying for the newspaper advertisement.
Is it possible to do it for us then? I mean, not necessarily for the newspaper, but for presentation to the commissioner.
Yes, absolutely. And I'll ask my staff to do that.
Okay, thank you. And the second thing is, has any one of you have any problem depositing your last commission checks into the bank? Because I went to the teller two days ago and deposited my last check. And the teller wasn't able to accept the check. They said that I need to contact the issuer of the check. So what I'm going to do is today I'm going to go in person to the bank and trying to deposit it. Maybe worn out the this, the numbers and on the bottom, which I doubted, but. I will try it in, if it doesn't work out, then I'll call you Janet and you can connect me with a person that you did last time with the payroll. Just wondering if anyone of you has any problem depositing your checks.
Well, as I did note, the county is in tough budget situation.
Who do I need to present my resignation, dear?
You should also be getting a check this Friday, so I don't know if you want to hold off and do them together or. I guess you get a paper check mailed up, I suppose, right? You don't have.
Yeah, yeah, or maybe I should do a file for direct deposits, so avoid this kind of. You know, situation. If you can send me the form again, I think I have it, but then I send it and then mail it back to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Or PDF, can PDF okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Janet.
I have a question. Is there any update on the Moss Beach Chevron? This has been almost five months since we continued that item.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Ketchum, and I apologize, it's taken longer than it anticipated to get this back to you. And I understand there's real desire to get this issue resolved as soon as possible. The reason is that we, from the. Draft staff reports that I've reviewed date, I don't believe we have gotten to the place where staff feels comfortable making the recommendation. Obviously denial is, oh, well, I mean, denial would force us back into enforcement action and. You know, that only gets us so far. We want to get something in front of the planning commission that we hope you can support and that we hope is, you know, consistent with the objectives of connect the coast side. And so it's taken more time for us to negotiate between Caltrans and the property owner. As you know, you know, the Caltrans bureaucracy is difficult to work with, and we're getting various answers to our questions. The property owner, I think, is only, has only so much motivation to. You know, collaborate with us and to put forward a project that, you know, is likely to cost them more money. And I know we need to keep the pressure on the property owner to, you know, own up and do the right thing, and so that's on us. And I did receive your message, Commissioner Ketchum, and I think the concerns you've raised, the issues you've raised are totally valid. And I intend to follow up on them and to try and get this back to you as soon as possible. But I want to make sure that. Either we have something that. You know, we can, and hopefully you can support, and if not, be ready to take, you know, and make sure the property owner is. Understands that we're ready to take significant enforcement actions. So that's where it stands.
Is there any consideration? So there, the same applicant has two projects sort of in the works here. The other one is the Harbor Village RV Park and it appears to me that there's a lot of progress and activity on Exela regarding that project. Whereas on the the other one, where the motivation, of course, is less, seems to be rather stalled. Is there any way to? Say, you know, this one comes first or? Or is that, are your hands tied?
Oh, well, I think the part of the dynamic has to do with while the same underlying property owner, it's different tenants. And I think the property owner relies on the tenants to move things forward. And obviously, a tenant that doesn't have what they want yet is more motivated to move things forward than a tenant who's, you know, trying to rectify something that's been done in the past. So I do intend to speak with the underlying property owner because I think. His involvement is essential to making sure that we get good progress in resolving the issue with the gas station. So. I'd like to suggest that I have that conversation with the property owner before we issue any sort of ultimatum about which one comes first. But. Unless there's some legal obligation to that, legal concerns about doing that. I think it's something that I could consider and suggest to the property owner that that could be a potential consequence of. The gas station not making good progress towards resolution.
Thank you, that sounds like a good plan to speak with, speak with them.
Will do.
I have an update. Two years ago, Parks Department gave us a. A walkthrough on a potential loanee portola heritage trail. Proposal, many my trail going through the county. The State Parks Historical. Department is has it on their agenda for this Friday on the consent calendar to approve for the first time a heritage trail. So we may see this move a little farther along than. We have for a long time, so just to let you know that this is moving forward.
That's exciting, and maybe one day we can take a hike as a group on it.
Well, ninety miles, huh?
At least a portion.
So any more?
Yes. Steve, anything you would like to say about this ground?
You know, generally as a legal matter, I think that's best left. I was just going to say that as a legal matter, I think that's. Generally better addressed offline outside of a public hearing. So perhaps if there are questions on that, we can follow up individually.
Okay.
I think they email.
But just for my. Is that? Taking place?
I have not heard of any postponement.
Is the groundbreaking taking place? Is that all that's?
Yes, to my knowledge it is, I have not heard of it being postponed.
Okay.
And I, I just wanna, I.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the team, a very clear email sent to us regarding that matter. I think that was very, that was a very useful and informative meeting, thank you very much, Steve.
Not hearing anymore.
One, one, one question about. Fact tracing, is there any you would like to say, Steve, about the contact tracers? You were going to assign from your department?
Yes, I'd be happy to. We have one planner, Tiare Peña, who's up and running. She's been fully trained and she's working full time as a contact tracer. We have a second staff member, Elizabeth Kimmel, who has been a part of our IT team. Transferring over to full time contact tracing in about a week's time. And there may be additional staff members that get assigned to that. From what I understand, the training is intensive and very well thought out. Tiare reported that she felt very well prepared by the training. I haven't gotten a recent report on how it's going, but as you hear in the news, I'm sure it's not easy.
Yeah.
I am very confident in Tiare's ability to do a good job of it. So, and same with Elizabeth, so. I'm happy to contribute to this effort, it's so important. But as I mentioned earlier, it's really placed a strain on our staff. But, you know, I'm lucky in that part of our philosophy has been to make sure that we have backup and backup to the backup for all of our important positions. So although we've lost some folks, I'm very proud of the folks underneath them that have stepped up and filled the gaps. So. That doesn't come without, you know, strain and pain, but we're getting through it and. The, you know, contributing to these efforts is our job as county employees. We're all emergency disaster workers, and so we take that seriously and will continue to contribute to that effort.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you for the updates.
Not hearing anymore. I will adjourn today's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
See you next time.
Bye bye.